...council on issues involving our park. Before we begin, please join with me in pledging allegiance to our national symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'm gonna have Steve Freemeyer, the Public Works Director, come up and do a quick lay down. But just to add to that, about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, the Public Works folks discovered that our park was having some wear and tear that wasn't recovering sufficiently. And so they put in some checks and balances. Please understand, using the city park is not your right. It's a privilege. And it's incumbent upon the administration and the council to be good stewards of city property. It's an old park. Now, the ban shell, I think, went in during FDR's administration, before World War II, as part of Public Works. I know that the, and probably went in about the same time as the courthouse, which was a 1939, which was a Public Works project. So it's very old. Grass is very old. And so naturally, it would not recover in the same way as it has in the past. So the particular model that we have had, where we have the cherry festival in June, sometimes it's among the hottest days of the year, sometimes it's among the wettest days of the year. It's a crapshoot. But either way, it causes problems because, for example, the rides are getting heavier and heavier. I can take you over there right now and show you where every ride was. This is the longest time that, since I've been here, that that park has not recovered. There's a compaction issue. It's exacerbated to a certain extent because we can't water for about a week before the cherry festival, which causes problems unless it's raining, because of compaction. And about a week before the show and shine, we don't water because of compaction. So there's a real issue. And it's incumbent upon the city not to lose that park, but to maintain it. And we're doing our best to come up with some solutions, real solutions, that mitigate us having to re-sod the park. We don't have the money to re-sod the park. Steve?
Mayor pretty much talked on a lot of what I've been saying is, you know, without being able to water our parks for the week before, and the reason why we don't water it is because rides are getting heavier, you know, cars and everything getting, they'll start sinking, making ruts. Then we have to go in and fix them. And so that's, you know, two weeks out of the, right during cherry festival or during that time. Then we go, are able to get a little bit of water on the park, not enough maybe to rejuvenate, and then we have to shut it off for a week again during our hottest times. And like he said, we're just trying to figure out ways that we can go about this where everybody wins, you know? And even, it comes down to my staff. You know, we have to spend two to three days before each one of these events, marking out sprinkler lines, letting everybody know where sprinkler boxes are, which then again, for the other parks we have in town, it puts my guys behind. And then when they get finished, we still have another two or three days putting, you know, picnic tables back, fixing anything that got broke. And that, again, you know, it's not like a water department or sewer department that you can go day by day. You know, grass doesn't quit growing. And so the more time we're having to spend fixing and repairing, helping make sure we don't have to fix and repair, it's the further my guys are getting behind. And, you know, we always try and put fertilizer on before. Well, it's getting to where it's maybe not helping as much as it should. So we're trying to find ways that we can make this still happen. But that's kind of where we're at on it. Any questions for me?
Mayor?
Yeah. So, actually, I've got a few.
Okay.
I started in 1989, went to the city like that, went through the cherry festival, turned to 2015. They always had those dilemmas impacting us, probably the late 1990s. They put me in airplane and had me fly over and take pictures because there's always that concern. And of course, it did grow back fast, like that stuff too. I guess my big question this year is, we're having this big problem with coming back. Have you changed fertilizer? Have you changed the watering system like that at all?
Not that I am aware of. I'm changing.
The reason I'm asking that is, I'm not picking on anybody, I'm not seeing you're doing your job. If you drive by the cemetery, the cemetery looks just about the city park. There's all the brown spots, and we don't have heavy equipment out there, we have cars out there. But the grass appears to be in the same condition. So I was wondering if maybe we're changing, changed different formula, or we did something different, because appearance seems about the same.
Right.
If you drive around the park, there's a lot of areas where there's no traffic. There, between the sidewalk and roadway, over by the pickleball courts, over by the tennis courts, there's a lot of areas I don't believe gets that heavy traffic, and there's still a problem with that grass. I don't, there's a bug in there?
Right.
Not, nothing about a landscaping guy, I don't know anything about that. I'm just wondering, because I do know, I've had a home since 1982 here in town, and I do know the quality of fertilizer you put on, or the person puts it on, makes a big difference on that.
Right.
If you have a good quality stuff, it grows really well, you water it a lot more, mow more. And if you don't, then it doesn't prosper at all. So I'm just trying to figure out if maybe, have you asked them to look at that? Is there a bug in there? I don't know what else to think about.
Yeah, no, and I haven't, I haven't really looked into the, you know, a different fertilizer or that, you know, stuff. And I do know there's spots in the park that we've always had trouble over kind of by the pickleball court. There's actually a big drain over there. And so the water tends to really get through that fast, and it doesn't allow enough time for the grass to soak it in. So I do know over there, that's, that's part of that soil issue up there.
I think it's for the general public and definitely myself, if you have to look within, you walk around, you're gonna see all these different areas where there are a lot of brown. It's not always just the areas where we have heavy traffic or the large.
Right.
Comment. Service as a boy, born and raised here, I've always attended cherry festival, that's the highlight. If you get online and look for Emmett, they say the traditional thing, that they have all these neat words for the city of Emmett as being the cherry festival is our tradition, our trademark. So I'm very concerned and very cautious, because I'm hearing from outside the community, not our staff, telling me what's happening. So, just if I can finish.
Okay.
So, for me to get a phone call from a citizen and say, hey, I'm told we're not gonna have the cherry festival in the park next year, we're gonna have show and shine in the park next year, we're all working together. Staff works with us, we work with staff, but we need to work together, communicate better, I think.
Right.
Because for me, I didn't even have an answer.
Right.
I'm getting barraged, and I saw some Facebook stuff today that's blaming the city of Emmett, the city staff, the city members, not the staff.
Right.
City members, city members, blame, getting blamed for all this stuff that's happening. And I don't believe this happened because it hasn't come to the council yet. And I would presume a large thing like that would actually come to council before you say you were no longer allowed in the park.
Right. And we haven't said you're no longer allowed in the park. We're trying to figure out how we still keep our park looking the way it is.
Actually, we don't want it looking the way it is.
Well, sorry. Looking, you know.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, right? And, and maybe it was the way I delivered a message with some of the people I've met with. My message was more, let's try and figure out a way, whether that be, you know, we move, you know, a certain things out of the park, or we move them, not completely remove the show and shine or the cherry festival, trying to figure out ways that we're keeping our park up, but yet still allowing this process.
The correspondence, I've had a little bit of correspondence, because when I was told, of course, I'd be shocked at the mayor, because I said, I was told the council made this agreement that that no longer gonna happen.
No.
And I explained that this did not happen.
Right.
But I was told the city council made that decision. So I encouraged those people to reach out to the city council, come to the council meeting tonight, something like that too.
Yes.
Then I got called by another person saying that the cruise night is gonna be changed. Just a lot of miscommunication. So that's what I asked for tonight, if I have any part of this.
Yes.
Is just to open communication, tell the public, tell the staff, so, and the council, everything's happening, so we are all on the same page.
Right.
I think that would benefit everybody a lot.
Right. And pretty much, we're just trying to make it so we can still have a beautiful park and still have our, you know, our great and our fun.
We've heard that.
Yeah.
Explain to him what you said to the Lions Club.
So when we talked to the Lions Club, I said, hey, our park is really suffering, it's starting to get to where we can't get it to grow back. Next year, we need to have a different route, whether it be we have all of the cars parked here on Main Street. You can still, we can still have the, you know, the breakfast and, and the normal stuff that you guys have in the park. But at least the cars, let's try and run down Main Street. And with doing that, it would also help bring it down Main Street and bring, you know, down into some of these businesses down on Main, to where, you know, people can bring their, their wife, and they can look at the cars, and the wife can go into the shops and stuff like that. And that was just one of my suggestions that we do. And I said I'd be willing to kind of help with, with that.
Mayor, yeah. Do you realize how far down, 600 cars we go?
How far down? On both sides?
I'd say at least past the canal.
Okay.
And, and then also, it just, if people saw that from, people don't just come here from Emmett. Yes, we have quite a route from Emmett. But if you bring, try bring other people in, like it normally happens with at least 400 cars from over the hill, I mean, they're coming from Washington, Oregon, because this is a big venue here. If we put it where it's gonna be down the street, those people aren't coming, and it's just gonna fizzle out. And that's what I'm afraid of.
Right.
And I don't understand the reasoning behind, you know, it's been going on for 39-plus years, why all of a sudden, in the last two years or last year, is it being a problem? Because I can't see any difference in the park. The cars don't weigh as much as, yes, you know, the rides and all that. And yeah, if you get 100 cars, it's gonna bend the grass over and do that. But I don't think seriously that it's causing dips in that in the ground.
Well, it's not causing the dips, because we're not, you know, we're not running the water on it. And then we also got all the foot traffic of people walking through there. I mean, you can see all the trails and stuff, even when the, when the cherry festival's there, when they leave, you can see the areas where all the booths were and where all the trails and everything were.
Mayor, yes. So Mr. Rob, I appreciate you coming forward and saying you're giving options.
Right.
And I believe, you're not saying you have to do that.
No.
I appreciate that option. And that's what I wanna make sure, because I think this, everybody in the community knows, these are just options we're discussing, we're not saying you have to do the things. Is that correct?
Right.
You're not telling them they cannot go in the park.
No, but it's just options. Period. And maybe it was the way I, I brought it to them, that may have been where they, they got that. But yes, I'm offering options for, for both sides, so.
And I think that's the best way for the city to approach anything that we have going on in, anywhere in our city, is to talk to these people, discuss things like that, communicate, and make some options. They may come with some options, you have some options, and they may come with a really good plan that will help both of us out. So I do appreciate that. And then with the cherry festival, I was told that they were told next year they have to find a new venue, they can't be in the park.
No.
Okay. That's why I just wanna make sure, make it clear about that, because that's what I was told.
Yeah.
So you have not told Chamber of Commerce they cannot have this?
No.
Coming up with the options within the city, discussing things?
Yes, and we, and Michael come up and he'll let you know on the meeting we had with the Commerce, or Chamber.
The city is just in discussion with community members and the organizations to try to find the best option, so we don't have to, hopefully not put any more damage to the park, but still keep it as close to park or in the park if possible.
Correct.
Awesome.
Yeah.
There seems to be a kind of a paradigm here in Emmett, and Emmett's among the worst, I think, where people will just, they don't know what the real facts are, but by golly, they'll tell you on Facebook what the facts are. And they're never correct. And guess who never contacts me, or you, to get the facts? Because we'll tell you the facts. The facts are, we're, we've got a problem in the park, we're trying to resolve it. And there are several options that we've been considering. Another option, for example, for cruise night, you know, that they all, you know, we've always done it this way, we've done it for 39 years, is, okay, how about having it at a cooler time? After the park has had a chance to recover? Does it always have to be the third Saturday of June, or Jul, yeah, July? Does it? Why?
Well, Mayor, can I ask? I can't answer for the Lions Club, but I can only go by the assumption, because I go to car shows. Everybody's got their car shows on particular dates that they've been running for 39 years. If you change it, it's gonna throw, you know, and it'll screw them up, because then people are gonna go, well, we're here for that on that date, you know, and it's gonna overlap with other people's car shows.
Sure.
And it's just, people forget about coming over.
All right. Well, that's, you know, that's fine. I mean, I've, I've been to several car shows myself.
Yes, you have.
Pomona's one of them. Not one of those car shows was on grass in a park. Not one. Just say, and when it comes to, when it comes to carnivals, I've been to several carnivals, grew up in Loston. Loston Roundup, had, they had a big carnival then, they had a big carnival in the spring. They were the roundup grounds, no grass. We didn't have to worry about compaction. So that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with an issue where the park is taking a beating. And you're gonna have, who was it? You were, you were gonna have a grass expert come over and take a look.
Well, I know I was gonna talk with Valley Agronomics, who we get their fertilizer from, and then I was gonna contact a couple of the turf companies around and just see what they would suggest to help, you know, with that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So I wanted to, when we were talking about the ban shells, so in 1935, the American Legion is the one that got up the money, funded that ban shell, with the intent of that park being in a place to hold events at. So if we lose having these two main events out there, I think it's gonna be detrimental to this city.
Isn't saying we're eliminating having events?
Even in the park. The park is the only place in this area that has adequate shade. We've talked about the fairgrounds, we talked about maybe John Wood having it down, it's not feasible. The Chamber of Commerce has put a lot of money into that electric over there and into that ban shell and all that whole area. That was all upgraded by the Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
With the intent of both those clubs being able to use that, that park.
Right.
Mayor, yeah. One other thing, the Lions Club, what could they put out there? Two gazebo's and, I mean, they helped. Just numerous things that they helped with, you know.
You're missing the point.
I, no, 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 no. What I'm saying is, if we lose them at the park, we might lose all extra funding that they present to us.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I haven't heard anything.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, just, what, 90 years was, 2025 was 90 years there, like that. And me, because I was smaller, but it seemed like the carnival part itself isn't growing, just that maybe the vendors are growing a little more. But it seemed like the, the equipment, we don't have more. Because I remember going by their little boy, and there wasn't a lot, and now it doesn't seem there's a lot around there. I don't know if that area could even hold anymore. So I don't know if that has changed. I do understand the ground.
There's more in there, it's heavier. There are more.
Well, I, I did some research today, the carnival has now moved from fuel to electric. So how much weight do you think that's reduced on the carnival rides? Now that they're all electric? All carnival rides are now electric?
I don't know that even to do with weight.
Well, that's something we might wanna look at, and how much, because putting the carnival in the streets, the streets are not level enough for these carnival rides.
Not even other carnivals?
Mayor, how is Weezer able to do it then?
Their streets not oval like this when you drive down, you don't have the gutter, it ends all the way on down. So and most of those rides would cover the street.
Mayor, one other thing I heard from organizations that contacted me was, if you do put the cars down, that means you, yeah, I may give them downtown, it may do some other things like that. But a lot of the things that bring the beautification to our community is our trees.
Right.
And also the older people like myself that walk through there, that shade is very valuable. I've heard a lot of people that drive older cars, a lot of people are retired that take the cars, and that shade is so critical for them to be able to enjoy a car show. There's so many cars in there, they can actually sit by the cars in the shade, they don't have to worry about, you know, ambulance calls like that stuff too. I think a car show down in Main Street would be neat if it was long enough like that stuff too. But I do worry about the older people that have may condition or just couldn't get out in the heat, because that hot heat, as you know, police department, fire department, you get out in the sun, it'll zap you. So I think the beautification of our beautiful park, if we can incorporate that together to make sure we can keep that healthy, but also very vibrant for our community and safety for our citizens and community for outstanding for us.
Yeah.
Well, the issue's not the show and shine per se. That exacerbates the issue because of the compaction that happens in general. Okay? So that, that's the issue. And we're just asking for some cooperation and, and some, some real solutions here, other than, well, it's too hard, let's just continue the march.
Mayor?
Yeah?
One more thing. I'm sure that any damages that are done, the Chamber will step up, and the Lions Club will step up to do what they do to repair the situation. We can't ask anything more of them. I mean, if they're gonna do it, the Chamber, I, one year didn't donate or pay $3,000.
I think this year it was.
I can't remember the exact amount, but.
Yeah, this year.
If they're willing to step up and take care of the situation, why would we step on their toes?
No one is stepping on.
Well, no, I'm just saying in the future, if we decide, why would we even consider?
Well, if, if what you're saying is, why don't we just continue doing what we're doing? The, the Chamber, neither the Chamber nor the Lions Club is gonna put in new turf over there. That's actually.
If it was, you're right. And I can't see doing the whole turf, doing that. But I mean, if it's something that they did, which caused a spot to be done, I'm sure that they're paid to have that replaced, if, you know, needed to be, or reseed.
Mayor, I just have one more question.
Yeah.
So, so the bigger our problem, guys, I'm looking at cherry festival mainly, is it the biggest thing is the, the rides is like that? Or is it all the vendors, or is it the food trucks, or?
So, if you look at the areas where the vendors are, where the food trucks are, that all comes back really quick. You know, those rides, you got, I know he, you know, he talks about that they went to electric, but you still got the generators that create the heat, you know? And the rides are still, they may be a little bit lighter, but they're still pretty heavy. And, you know, Mayor talks about the compaction, it's, with it being, you know, not having any water on it, and then the people walking on it, it does compact that dirt and make it, you know, a little harder and a little harder for the grass to grow. And then also just the ability to, to water, you know? If we could figure out some way of in between there to, I mean, we can only, we can try and run that water even more, but then the rest of the park suffers. Right? So that's, that's a lot of the big issues, is the ride area, and that's the area that's being hit the hardest.
I'm really curious about the, the grass evaluation or.
Yeah, yeah. And soon as I get that, I'll let you know.
It's my understanding that that carnival, after they break down here, half of it goes to Dairy Days, and the other half goes somewhere else. I don't know where they go, but it might be Weezer, I don't know. If we had half of the rides, and, and that we could, we could, you know, okay, last year you were here, this year you need to be over here, that would mitigate the, the compaction issue, plus doing aeration. That may be the solution. Because if Dairy Days, which is a bigger celebration than we have, can go with half of the carnival, why can't we?
Well, the, excuse me, Mayor, the carnival, the company that owns that carnival owns like nine different, and they split the other ones and go to them also. So they do have the same amount, but it's just ours is on 10 rides, but they sent five over there, five there, but they have other companies that come over and do them, and then they go to Washington and wherever else. So they.
Well, there's an issue that doesn't, is not being resolved by doing what we've always done. So, Mike, do you wanna come up and explain the meeting that you had with the folks at
Mayor and council, so all of the city staff met with the Chamber of Commerce. They usually do kind of an after-action meeting each year after cherry festival, and I would say it was a very good meeting. And I think that, you know, sitting back, kind of just listening to the conversation, everybody in this room cares about Emmett and cares about these things that are going on. And what I'm hearing is, there's, there's some issues that we want to try and find resolution to, and we want to work with these folks to try and find those, those solutions, as well as the input and the ultimate authority that the council has with making that decision of what that looks like, right? But our meeting with the Chamber, I think, again, there's different ideas that are being tossed out, and it's, it's not that any one of the ideas has to be the silver bullet, it's just getting people to just, can at least look at these different options. And maybe none of the options will work, but we won't know until we actually evaluate them and actually give them a good evaluation, right? So I think that was what I took the most out of the, the meeting with the Chamber, and they were very willing to at least look at what some of that might look like. And we have a follow-up meeting with them in September that we're looking forward to. And we have some stuff on our end as staff to get done before that meeting, that we will, when it comes to the grass, you know, evaluating what that would look like. And so, again, I know it gets emotional for everybody involved, and for good reason. But I, I look forward to working with the different groups and seeing what we can bring to the table, and maybe it isn't any change, but I'm hoping that we can, we can help mitigate some of the things that staff is concerned with and is bringing to our attention. Does that make sense? Any other questions for me again?
Yeah. So speaking about that Chamber meeting, just the tidbits, I think there's miscommunication sometimes, you get two sides of the very story.
Sure.
If they move the rides to the street, it's gonna eliminate the parade, or at least the parade route that's always been there, not saying that we always have to keep there. But that's what everybody does, they enjoy it by Washington Park. So you put all the rides out in the roadway, that's gonna change it. I was told that they're saying they would eliminate one of the parades, they'd eliminate the children's parade and combine it with adult parade, so you're actually eliminating a parade. Is that true? Or is that one of the options, is limiting parade routes and parade options?
Yeah, and I won't totally speak for the Chamber, but I think some of those ideas were actually generated from the Chamber board. That wasn't something that the city had brought up specifically. Again, this was just a good dialogue that we had, and there was some discussion about even changing some of the parade routes and what that would look like. And I think both city staff and the Chamber had identified some real positives that could have come, could come out of that, regardless if we moved the rides or not. That's, is that fair? Tina?
So, again, I guess I'm gonna just focus back, that I believe the meeting tonight is to get it out in the open, because.
Sure.
All the people that hear the little bits here, little bits there, they combined their own decision of what really was transpired in those meetings. And I don't know if that's true or not, because I wasn't there either, I couldn't rather that. But anyway, I just think that's so valuable to get this out, especially this big, I guess topic that could be such a critical thing to our community, that needs to be discussed openly with a lot of people, not just the boards. If you're, if there's a meeting, I don't know, can a council member attend one of those meetings?
What's that?
Can a council member attend those meetings?
Which meeting?
Chamber meeting, a Rotary meeting, a Lions meeting.
Oh, of course.
One percent, are, could we all attend them?
No, no, you don't wanna all be there, because that, you know, that's, oh, we're No, no, you don't want to all be there because that, you know, that's, oh, they're all together and they're going to be discussing. There is nothing that prevents you from being a member of those organizations.
So I'm going to open it out. When those meetings come up, Lions, Rotary, Quanis, whatever you, if those meetings come up, please contact me. I would love to sit in on the meetings. Not that I'm the go-to guy, but I'm just saying if I hear a little bit, I'm sure every council member here has. I've been hearing these for the last couple of weeks. We don't want to be blindsided by a Rotary club or a Lions club or staff. We want to know so we can help defeat some of these rumors that are out there too. So communication is everything. So I would encourage you to reach out to council members to get involved a little more.
So let everyone understand, the city is pro Cherry Festival. The city is pro Show and Shine and Cruise Night. The city has an obligation, a moral obligation, to take care of its property. And if we work together and not assume the, it's my way or the highway, we can resolve this. Of that I have no doubt. Any other questions? All right?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And I would encourage each and every one of you, if you have a solution or a recommendation for a solution, then drop it off here at City Hall. Give it to Counselor Nebiker and staff will staff the issue because this is a problem. We're not making this up. It is a problem and we need to fix it somehow, some way. Doing the same thing over and over isn't fixing it. So we need to come up with some kind of a resolution where we don't lose the grass in the park and have to replace it, at least in large bundles. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
One second.
All right. The motion has been made by Counselor Zinkin. We had two seconds. They were tied. There was no tie for the run. It was a.
I'll give it to Butler because.
Oh. Counselor Butler seconded. All those favorably signify by saying aye.
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 Lee Harden reset or adjourn.